Okay, good evening and welcome to the July 2nd meeting of the governing body. I call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Ortiz, who will provide the invocation this evening, stand as you are able and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, I would like to introduce Pastor Buffett, if you will come to the podium, please. He was a pastor for... Oh, my, sorry. I'm sorry, I heard you back there. Truvine Missionary Baptist Church at Third and Tef, and he's also a chip off the O Block, Reverend Dee Dee Miller's grandson, so I asked him to come tonight and give us the invocation, Pastor Buffett.
All saying thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for allowing us to meet today. Now, Father God, we pray that you bless this meeting and whatever is done here, let it be done pleasing to your sight and according to your will. Father God, we ask you to bless each councilman, each officer, each person here today, and Jesus Saint, we pray. Amen.
I gladly read through the flag of the United States of America into the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, room. Okay, first item on the agenda is the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala, here. Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Cale.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
We have 10 present.
Move on now to appointments. Madam Clerk.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Alexis Simmons to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill an expired term ending July 12, 2026.
No further appointments. Is there a motion to approve? Okay. Okay. Motion to approve by Councilwoman Miller and second by Councilman Banks. And we're all here, we can just, we don't use the whatever, just do a roll call or... Okay, roll call then.
Councilmember Banks.
Here. Yes. Oh, wait a minute, right, sorry.
Cale.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yeah.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
And Ortiz.
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Okay, congratulations, Alexis. I see you right in front of us here in the audience. Would you stand so we can recognize you and thank you for your service? Okay, move on to our third item, presentations, if you'll read, Madam Clerk.
The Topeka Housing Authority Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor, governing body. My name is Trey George, and I'm the president and CEO for the Topeka Housing Authority. I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak with you all and present to you all this evening. Looking back, it's actually been almost six years since I've been here to present to the governing body, so I always appreciate the opportunity. I'm going to go through this presentation quickly and then I'd love to answer any questions that you may have. A little bit of a overview about the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority was created as the Housing Authority for the City of Topeka in 1958. It operated as a division of the City of Topeka up until 2001. At that time, it was transferred to our current structure, which is what's called a quasi-governmental entity. Basically means we're a non-federal agency that administers federal programs. We have a, we're governed by a five-member Board of Commissioners. Whoever the mayor is at the time, we have a vacant commissioner spot. The mayor appoints who that is and then city council approves that, so thank you for that. We have a total of three separate legal entities, and I'll talk about each one of those quickly tonight, and then we currently have 52 full-time staff at the Housing Authority. What does THA do? We provide safe, decent, affordable housing for low-income and extremely low-income families who live in Topeka and Shawnee County. What that means is the families that live with us in public housing or participate in one of our programs, they don't pay more than 30% of their adjusted gross income towards rent and utilities. So everybody's is a little bit different, it just depends on what the income of the household is. We have two major housing programs at the Housing Authority, and that is the Housing Choice Voucher Program or Section 8 in public housing. Talk about public housing first. Currently, we have 744 homes between nine different developments in Topeka. The complexes are owned jointly between the Housing Authority and HUD. We have a total of 16 maintenance staff that provide maintenance to those facilities, two housing specialists. We do have a manager over the program and then two resident assistants who work with the families at the sites. This is a terrible map zoomed in of Topeka that shows where our properties are, but what's probably more important to you all is if we overlay it with the council districts. So you'll see we have five of our nine properties are located in Councilmember Miller's district in central Topeka. We have two in Councilmember Ortiz's in east Topeka, as well as one in Councilmember Banks in east Topeka as well, and then we have one in Councilmember Hofer's out at Seventh and Gage. The other major program, as I mentioned, is the Housing Choice Voucher Program, Section 8 being the most common name for that. That's where we provide rental assistance to families who then choose the landlord that they'd like to live with in the community. Currently, we have a voucher authority of up to 1,350 families to be covered through that program. It's a little misleading because it's also based off of funding available through HUD, but our rental assistance is a tenant-based rental assistance, meaning that we, the assistance is to the family, and so as they move from home to home, the assistance follows them from home to home compared to a project-based rental assistance where the home itself is what's being assisted depending on who moves in and moves out. One of the great things is we have really awesome participation from landlords in Topeka. That's not this common in all jurisdictions, so it's something we are very proud of. We have a little more than 500 private landlords that we work with right now, and that works out to be over three and a half million in housing assistance payments that are paid out to private landlords in our community every year. One thing to keep in mind of that is that THA is not a party to the lease. The lease is the agreement between the tenant and their landlord, as you would be in any type of rental situation. We have an agreement with our participant in the program and then the, we have an agreement with the landlord called the HAP contract, the Housing Assistance Payment Contract, but we do not get involved in the actual lease itself. Same as in public housing, families don't pay more than 30% of their adjusted gross income towards rent and utilities. It's called the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Section 8 is the largest portion of that, but there are some smaller programs within that program that are more population-specific, so the VASH program is for veterans that we receive referrals directly from the VA. The Family Self-Sufficiency Program, Mainstream and NED are, again, smaller programs, but they're more for specialty populations. Talk a little about THA Inc. now, which is our 501(c)(3) nonprofit development entity. THA Inc. builds new developments, purchases affordable housing developments and improves them. What is affordable housing? I know you guys hear about this all the time, but we'll just kind of recap this. In order for a home to be considered to be affordable, the rent plus utility calculation has to be at or below what's called the fair market rent or FMRs. On the screen is what the current FMRs are in Topeka. We do have a waiver right now from HUD where we can go actually up to 120% of the FMRs. That's in an effort to try to bridge the gap between where the FMRs are and where market has gone to, and so they allowed us to extend that into 2024, so we're good through the rest of this year and then hopefully FMRs will catch up and/or we'll get an additional waiver. So one thing I always want to mention about affordable housing is LITC or Low-Income Housing Tax Credits. Just keep in mind that that is just a source of development funds, it is not rental assistance, although LITC properties do have to accept rental assistance at the properties. Currently, under THA Inc., we have a total of 137 homes. Four, 130 of those are between four different tax credit developments. You borrow a place, you borrow a place to Casson Homes and Curtis Homes, and then we have seven single-family homes, and then we have over 20 acres of bare land that we're holding for future development. All of the properties are managed, and this is our third entity, is Topeka Housing Management Services. That manages all of our non-public housing property, as well as we manage property for other owners in Topeka. And we do have two tax credit developments that we are working on, either applications or applying for funding right now. That'll add an additional 79 homes, Johnston Village and Van Buren Homes. Part of our mission is to successfully provide housing to the houses, to the families that we serve, and that success takes a lot of different initiatives. I'll quickly go through some of those. We have resident associations at most of our properties to get the residents engaged and be able to get their input on what's happening in their community. The Deer Creek Community Center is our largest community center and has a very active after-school program and a very large summer program. We do also have space in the basement at the Deer Creek Community Center for the Topeka Police Department Community Policing Officer, which we love having them in the neighborhood. We have computer labs at most of our properties in order to help people apply for benefits, apply for jobs and seek resources. And then I want to, one last item I want to talk about is the Pine Ridge Partnership, which is located in the Pine Ridge neighborhood, which is the oldest and largest public housing neighborhood in Topeka. Partners in the partnership are the families that we serve, obviously Topeka Housing Authority, THA Inc., United Way of Cow Valley is a major partner in that, Topeka Public Schools and then Washburn University. This is an aerial overview of the Pine Ridge neighborhood, if you're not familiar, located in east Topeka, sits on about 30 acres. There's 202 homes in Pine Ridge. It was built between 59 and 63. It is bordered by Golden Avenue on the west, 10th Street to the north, I-70 to the south, and then Carahan Trafficway or Deer Creek Trafficway to the east. This is a little bit more of a zoomed-in aerial of the partnership. It started with a parents' teachers facility that's located in what was the community center for the neighborhood. We then moved south into three what were residential structures that had been converted into an early learning center preschool called Pine Ridge Prep. There's 51 three- and four-year-olds attend school there every day. The United Way Born Learning Trail and Park, this was the first born learning trail in Topeka. It was a massive renovation of the playground and is a really great gathering spot for the families. We renovated a mower, what was a mower maintenance shop for better part of 50 years and started as E3 Aquaponics, and that has since transitioned into the THA Empowerment Center, which is a partnership with GTP, helping public housing residents who would like to start their own businesses. Next order to that is the Pine Ridge Family Health Center, which is a nurse practitioner-led urgent primary care center that's operated by the Housing Authority. It's also a dedicated training site for Washburn School of Nursing BSN and DNP students. There's a daycare that's part of the empowerment center right next to that, and right next to that is the Food and Clothing Bank. So that is a whole bunch of information. Quick overview about the Housing Authority. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but again, I just appreciate you allowing me to come in and speak with you all this evening, and I'll leave my contact information up there. If anybody would ever like to come out and tour our properties, I'm happy to do that. If you ever have questions or concerns, comments, compliments, we'll always welcome those as well, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Trey. Any questions for Councilman...
Go ahead, no worries. Go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. I am not sure why you're only here every six years.
Yeah. It's not intentional. It just hadn't, the last few years, I guess, hadn't been, but I come to the meetings every once in a while, but happy to come as much as you all would like.
Okay, yeah, because I think we, with housing being such an issue right now, I'd like some more updates on that.
For sure.
A little more frequently. And also, I will second that of Pine Ridge, that prep school is wonderful.
Thank you.
That whole area that you guys have redesigned there, it's really good. I'm curious to see how many homes you'll be able to add to your list in the next five to 10 years, kind of what your goal is. So that way, if we can get some updates on that in the coming years, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One thing I'll say on that is that as far as public housing homes, we cannot have more. We, HUD sets what's called a fair cloth limit, and our fair cloth limit is 744, so we cannot build new public housing without tearing down old public housing, which that wouldn't be a bad thing, but we're not capped on the amount of affordable housing that we can build as long as funding provides. So just, but happy to give you the update on that, but in the short answer is as many as we possibly can if we get funding for it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilman Cavill and Councilman Dobler.
Are there any barriers that you're facing that you might, the city might be able to help out with through, you know, some federal law regulations, statute, whatever?
Yeah.
Is there anything that the city needs to be looking at that necessarily you're not able to help out with?
Oh, there's a lot that we're not able to help out with, but we have a, we have a really excellent relationship with the city. We work with city staff quite often on a number of different initiatives, but you know, there's, there's a, there's some, there's some, there's some things out there in different jurisdictions and different areas that I think are in surrounding towns around us that I think are going to come here soon and dealing with Section 8 specifically and how the source of income as a protected class. And so right now, it's optional for landlords in Topeka, but there's a lot of, and I'm, and I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or another for it, but it's something that is in Lawrence and Kansas City. There are cities, there's whole states that are, that are taking in source of income as a protected class to where basically you cannot deny somebody the ability to rent from you solely based off of their income. And so if, right now, when people receive their voucher, they can call landlords and they say, "Do you accept Section 8?" Some say yes, some say no, and that's what that would take away, is the ability to just say no solely based off of that. Does not take away the landlord's ability to screen however they would like, as long as they do it fairly and consistently across the board. So there's some different things like that that are, that are out there, but, but honestly, anytime we have something come up, if we reach out to the city, we're always, are assisted very well and we try to do the same back. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How many, between your housing units and your vouchers, how many total units do you serve? How many, how many total units do you provide in this community? Rough guess, if you would.
So, so physical structures that we provide right now is just under 1,000, and then with the rental assistance program and Section 8 on top of that, we don't, we don't necessarily provide the structure for those.
Right.
But, but right now, we're just under 1,000 families that are being assisted through that program right now, and we have some room to grow on that. It's just a timing, so.
So that's 2,000 roughly altogether?
Yeah, if you combine everything all together, it's about 2,400 units.
That's great. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Trey, can you tell me with your public housing, do you have a waitlist still?
Yes.
What is it?
As of yesterday, it was 232 people on that list.
And, and is that usually the average?
Yeah, so the public housing waitlist, it is set up by bedroom size, and so if you are, if you require a one-bedroom, then you go on the one-bedroom waitlist. The one-bedroom waitlist is always the largest waitlist, but we have more one-bedroom units than anything else, so that kind of lines up. We have up to five-bedroom homes. The five-bedroom waitlist has two people on it, and those two people have been on there for probably about a year, and there's just not a lot of turnover in that, but we also only have a total of seven five-bedroom homes.
Okay, and do you have a breakdown that maybe you could, I don't know if others want it, but I would like to see a breakdown on race and ethnicity?
Yeah.
And, you know, my email, if you could give that to me, I would really appreciate it.
I sure will. We, we have a whole data set on it, and so I can send you all that for sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trey, I just want to personally say thank you for making sure that, you know, over in Pine Ridge and your units, that they are trashless as much as possible. Your crew comes out, they pick it up as soon as they can get it. I think me and you joked about how many mattresses you can throw out, but I just wanted to say thank you. My question is, at 21st and Golden, I know you guys have acquired that property. When are we looking to do anything with that?
We've submitted a tax credit application, so we, we own 10 acres at the corner of 21st and Golden. We also have 10 acres that's over at 23rd and Highland. And so Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, who is a state finance agency, they're the ones that hand out the tax credits. Depending on the year, they have different scoring criteria in what's called their qualified allocation plan. And so we've presented Johnston Village as a prop, as a proposed property at that site at 21st and Golden. We've also proposed it over at 23rd and Highland. It has not been awarded yet. We're actually meeting with a developer on the 25th of this month, and we're trying to put together a 4% tax credit application for that project, and if we're successful in putting that together, then it'll actually, that will be at 21st and Golden would be our anticipation of that. And so the good news is, is that 4% credits are non-competitive, and so generally speaking, they're available, but it's just putting all the rest of the funding stream together because they're not as valuable as the 9% credit, but with the state credit now, then that helps bridge that gap a little bit.
Okay.
So I don't have a short answer, but hopefully soon.
Okay, just want to make sure it's still on the radar.
It is, 100%.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Trey. You covered a lot of ground really fast.
Seven minutes.
For those who, who maybe it scooted by, we've got the older projects like Deer Creek and Pine Ridge, but if council members wanted to try and get Trey to do a tour, Echo Ridge, for instance, was built new by THA. It's very highly energy efficient. They're lovely developments, and so if, if that is an example of what you might be doing on those other properties, it, it might be good for all of us to know or refresh on that. Along that line, you mentioned two pending developments. Van Buren is in my district. I'm not sure where Johnston is. Could you give us a little bit of idea on both?
Yeah, so Johnston Village is the one that we were talking about over at 21st and Golden.
Okay.
And so that's, that's where we would plan to build that development. For Van Buren, it will be at 16th and Van Buren, the site of the old Van Buren School Building. The school building, as we all know, caught on fire, but, so that will need to come down. But between the site where the actual school building sits, then there's some other parcels that are, that are already owned as part of that project, and so that's where we'd be looking to develop that.
Well, just so people know, that one happens to be with the Van Buren School and those sites, some long-awaited infill that will help to fill out that area, and as we're all looking at affordable housing and homelessness and vacant properties and so on, just to know that THA as a partner, it takes some time sometimes to pull it together, but...
It does. So Van Buren was actually, it was originally planned to be Phase 2 of Casson, what is now Casson Homes, and then the pandemic happened, and those projects struggled to get to completion with just a number of different, different challenges that happened. They're 100% full now, they're, they're great, and they're wonderful properties, but that slowed us down on the application for what is, what will be Van Buren Homes. And so we'll present that for the first time in February to KHRC for the 9% competitive application.
Thank you, and Van Buren was supposed to originally be housing in the school and then extra housing in those infill lots.
Correct.
And if there is a tour, the Curtis Homes that he mentioned were Curtis School plus development around it, so.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that is an excellent example of what can be done. Unfortunately, we won't be able to utilize a historic building any longer, but, but it, it's, I, I love the idea of being able to use the historic building because I think it's a really cool building, but it's actually, from a financial standpoint, it's actually better without the building, so.
I understand that, I just wanted to lay that out.
Yeah, but no, but Curtis is an excellent example of what can be done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trey, in your presentation, you referenced 500 landlords that are participating. Is that a kind of steady number, or is that fluctuating much at all?
It's, it's pretty steady. We are constantly adding new landlords. One of the big things that we've seen over the last several years, how rents have gone in Topeka, is we've started to see some, some properties transition and change hands, and sometimes the new owner has different plans for it. The honest answer right now is you can, you can get a very nice rent for a market rate rental now. So some of those that landlords who had always been participating in the Section 8 program, if they sell the property and the new landlord comes in and the rents are higher than what we are able to pay against the FMRs, then, then some of those have fallen out of the available stock. But we are, so we've, we've lost a few landlords, but we're also adding landlords, so we stay pretty constant around that 500. And some are, they own one home, and some people, you know, it's large apartment complexes, so.
Is, is there a ongoing, I guess, communication, recruitment, vetting, all that other thing, all those other things with those landlords to maintain that, that number and also to make sure that the properties are suitable for the tenants?
Yes. So HUD has changed several different things. Forever, the inspection standard fell under what was called HQS, Housing Quality Standards. They then changed to UPCSV, which is a little more strict, and now the big move is to what's called INSPIRE, and it is a much more strict inspection standard, which is not a bad thing, but we, fortunately, HUD was actually going to implement it. It started, it went into effect January 1 for public housing, and so our public housing properties are now being inspected under INSPIRE. We've, as of, actually today, we have had six of our nine inspected under the INSPIRE standard. That is going to be rolling out for Section 8. It was supposed to go into effect October 1. HUD was not ready for it, and so it will go into effect October 1 of 2025. We will start inspecting to that, though, October of this year, with the understanding that things that are fail under INSPIRE will not actually fail right now, but we'll be educating the landlords in an effort that a year from now, when it does go into effect, it's not a surprise at that point, because repairs are costly, and so what we don't want to do is we don't want to mandate repairs that, that price landlords out of the market, but we also have to make sure that the home is safe. And so, so we, we, so we inspect before a family moves in, and then it has to be inspected at least annually thereafter, and then the family or the landlord, they can request a complaint inspection at any time, and we'll go out and do an additional inspection at that time.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the follow-up.
Thank you.
Any further? Seeing none. Thank you, Trey, for your presentation.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
The next presentation is on Data Walk, a catalyst for community change.
Good evening, Mayor.
Brett.
Councilmembers and city staff, thanks for the opportunity to set up the Data Walk today in the Holiday Building. Eight banners are in the entryway to the building as part of a Data Walk that was initiated at the end of October of 2023 as part of a, part of a larger project here in Topeka. And so what I want to do is just give you a few highlights from some of the data pieces and then talk just very briefly about some of the things that are happening across the community and where we, where we might see some opportunity. So the Data Walk starts with a demographics banner that indicates that 1 in 5 children born in Shawnee County is Hispanic or Latino. That is significant as you make your way through the Data Walk and you begin to see disparities between white and black and brown populations, so that if we have 20% of our population in terms of children being born, we need to think through how it is that we are going to provide services to a growing population in our community. Next to that is a banner that is related to infant mortality. It's one of the more sobering banners as part of the Data Walk, as we have the ZIP code in the state of Kansas with the highest infant mortality rate, the 66604 ZIP code. What we know from the data that comes from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and other local data is that Hispanic and black infant mortality rates rose at a rate two to three times that of their white counterparts in, in Shawnee County. And so when we, when we begin to disaggregate things across our community by race and ethnicity, we begin to see the disparities, we begin to see the disparities grow. When we look at children as they make their way into school, we note that in Topeka Public Schools, nearly half of 3rd graders in Topeka Public Schools test below a basic level in language arts, meaning that they're not reading at grade level. When we take a look at that across the community, we note some interesting things. We note that those schools that have the lowest percentage of students who are reading at grade level happen to be from those schools that are from formerly redlined areas in the city of Topeka. We recently did a study as part of this early literacy work, part of a dissertation from one of the staff members from Topeka Public Schools, and we took a look at the formerly redlined areas. We took a look at areas that were not redlined within Topeka Public Schools, and we took a look at Auburn/Washburn School District. When we accounted for things like income and race and ethnicity, what we found is that those students who were from the formerly redlined areas sometimes were 10 times less likely to be reading on grade. That's taking into account race, ethnicity and income, some of these most significant leading indicators for students being able to read on grade. We take a look at how students do in school. We know that the graduation rates, particularly in Topeka Public Schools, the largest school district in the area, has increased over the last few years, but it still trails in Topeka, or excuse me, it still trails Shawnee County numbers and it still trails Kansas numbers. And again, when you look at those high schools in particular, the high school in the east part of the city, and you take a look at the graduation rate there in a formerly redlined area, it continues to lag with its peers. When we look at folks who are graduating a high school and beginning to start a family, we start thinking about things like childcare. And we know that in Topeka, it costs as much for your child to go to childcare for one year as it does for a year of tuition at Washburn University. We know that a significant number, nearly 5,600 children under the age of six, do not have childcare options within our community. And we know that there are a number of families in our community who are spending roughly 17% of their income on childcare. When we take that into account alongside the housing data that we have, that indicates that 43% of renters in Topeka do not have affordable housing, meaning that they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing. When you take that more than 30% and you add that to 17%, you've got families that have 50% of their income going to housing and going to childcare. That is an economic development issue and an economic development problem in our community. And it's not one that is unique just to us. We look at those families as they grow and as they begin to go to work. We know that we continue to see disparities as we disaggregate things like income. And we look at poverty levels among white populations and among black and Hispanic populations, we see significantly, significant overrepresentation of black and brown families in poverty compared to their white counterparts. And finally, when we look at the city as a whole and we overlay former redline maps from the 1920s and 30s and we overlay them with the neighborhood health map, for example, or what we've done out here, which is we've used the Area Deprivation Index from the University of Wisconsin, and we've measured seven indicators across the community. What we note is that those areas that are east of southwest Washburn in our community are some of the most economically disadvantaged in the United States. What I mean by that is when you look at their ADI, it's 93, 94, 95, up to 100%. When a community reaches, or when a census block group reaches 100%, we're talking about the most disadvantaged in the United States. So we're talking about areas in central and east Topeka that we could pair, for example, to south Chicago. We could compare to Washington, D.C. We could compare to Los Angeles County, whatever the case may be. When we look at this data, it is easy to look at it and to think gloom and doom. When I look at this, I see possibility and I see opportunity. I know from the social service sector and from presentations that you have heard recently that there is momentum unlike anything I've seen in my eight and a half years at United Way of Cal Valley in terms of work that's happening in this community. Folks are beginning to see the intersections of the social determinants of health, all of those things that affect your health that happen outside the doctor's office, which you can imagine how many of those there are, beginning to see the intersections of those with race and income and geography, and beginning to think how we might be able to intervene in strategic ways. So we think about the civic group, for example, looking at violence intervention as a significant federal grant coming into our community. We look at the great work of the homeless innovation team and the recommendations that have come there. We look at the community health needs assessment that was just done in our community. And for the first time since 2008, when we started that process as part of the ACA, housing was the number two priority just under behavioral health. That tells us that the community recognizes this as an issue. And we see all of these things happening in our community. And it seems to me that there's an opportunity for us to pull all of these together and to start rowing in the same direction. And I see the city not as the entity to solve these problems, but as an entity to be a significant partner, to look at the ways in which you use the funds that come through the city, as you look at budgeting, as you look at the ways that you're allocating dollars, as you look at the strategies that you're developing as a city, to look at the partners who are doing the work across the community and to pull those in line. These disparities that we see in our community did not happen because of one program. They did not happen over a period of one year. They happened because of systems and they happened over decades. And it won't take, it won't be one program that fixes it. It won't be one year. It won't be one decade. It'll be systems level changes over generations that change these maps that give those children in east Topeka and central Topeka that are in 100% and 93% ADI areas opportunities that those children who are living in the west and southwest and even southeast parts of our community have. That's certainly the hope. That's the hope for the Data Walk. It's called a catalyst for community change. It's not just data for the sake of data, but the hope is that we are able to make some changes as a community so that future generations have more opportunity. I'm happy to send out a link to the K H I article that includes all of the posters for those of you who weren't able to attend today. And you're able to look at those and there are handouts there as well. Happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think it's really good that you came forth with it. I think that this type of dialogue from your side is long overdue coming to us, just like us starting to talk about it, which is what we plan to do with the Public Health and Safety Committee in September, looking at these disparities, looking at the challenges that we have in Topeka through the public health lens, through the social determinants of health. You know, I hope you can attend that meeting when we have it in September. Because I think what this shows is, you know, we talk a lot about DEI and DEI is a good thing. But these, this is more of the underbelly of the difficult part when you talk about equity. I think that definitely we can also see this as racism, as a public health crisis. I know that that's not trendy, just like talking about the underbelly of DEI and topics like these are not trendy, but they're not supposed to be. These are equity based issues. And so this Data Walk and other things that we have going on in the community, it's about time. We've talked about redlining just from the side, on the periphery, on council for a handful of years, but again, it stays on the sideline. And I think what your data proves and data that we continue to get from the Shawnee County Health Department, et cetera, shows that these are, and I agree with you, it's not for the city to take everything and solve it, but it is relevant and important for us to be a partner because if we stay away from these issues, we do ourselves no service as a city, as we continue to say, we want people to come here, we want this quality of life. Well, that includes everyone. And I also want to say this because I think that there can be a lot of misinterpretation of when this type of data comes out, that even though we know these disparities are real, the lack of equity is real, the racism is real, the systemic issues are real, it is so easy to blame those that are in the cycles of poverty. I think that we understand that that whole jargon of lift yourself up by your bootstraps has like had its time. It's done. It's not, it's irrelevant because it's not dealing with the systems. And you and I have talked about the systems before and how damaged the systems are. And so I think that you coming here, having that display as you have, and I would like to get a PowerPoint for it. It's good and it's timely. And I think that we're finally at the point where we need to tackle this as a governing body and at the committee level and in partnerships however we can. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Councilman Banks.
When you were talking about the data and the redlining area, how is that data determined? Where are those redlining areas located?
Yeah. Yeah, so when we take a look at maps of the city of Topeka from really any time prior to the Fair Housing Act of 1964, sort of the passage of that civil rights legislation baked into federal law and federal practice was this notion that areas, and this is again, not unique to Topeka, you can look at redline maps across the United States, any areas where you had black and brown populations living, those areas were restricted to investment from banks. And so as a result, you have decades of disinvestment in areas really of central Topeka and east Topeka moving in that direction. And so as a result, you have areas that did not have access to that capital that say other areas might have had. And we're even talking decades that we often look back on as sort of great, sort of post-war boom areas like the 1950s, where a number of folks experienced economic prosperity and many folks did, except for folks who were restricted in those types of ways. One of the stories that I tell when we talk about redlining is we talk about, as we talk about my neighborhood. So I live 15th and Boswell in College Hill. And if I were a returning GI, a black returning GI from World War II with cash in my pocket and I didn't even need a bank loan and I wanted to move to 15th and Boswell with my family, I could not do that because of covenants and codes that restricted that neighborhood to what was, quote, "the encroachment of Negroes" as it was codified in the covenants and as it was codified in the maps. And so beyond just the redlining, you also had discrimination in terms of housing covenants and housing codes. And again, you have that sort of wiped off the books in the 1960s with the Fair Housing Act. But even today, when we look 60 years later at median incomes across our community, if you look at 15th Street that borders my home and you look at, say, the median income at 15th and Washburn, and then you go to 15th and Lakeside, a mile and a half to Westboro, and you look at the difference in median income is night and day. It's absolutely night and day. Or you even look to the side of the street in central Topeka in many of those areas and you will see a preponderance of rentals and homes that did not have access to that capital and then homes just directly across the street that were in the restricted neighborhood that had absolute access to all of those resources. And so it's the only way that I can explain it, those significant disparities that we have in our community. And you can see it to the street level in Topeka. And again, that's not unique to us. You can go to Kansas City, Missouri, you can see the same thing. You can go to Florida, you can see the same thing.
Further? Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. And just in case it wasn't clear, what happened with those maps is they drew red lines around them and that's where the redlining term came from. I actually have a letter from 1980. I live on the east side of Lane Street from a lending company here in Topeka that said, 1980, we don't lend east of Washburn. So it wasn't over. They just chose their lending area after that for a while.
For sure.
So I just want to thank you. I do represent District One, a substantial part of what affects those numbers you talked about, 66604 ZIP code. It's discouraging really to hear those reports. But I agree with you and just want to support the fact that I do think people are of a mind in this community to change those things and I think we can do it. So I appreciate you saying that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett, in your presentation, you, after you gave all the information that was not very encouraging, you came back with the thought that you see opportunities. And that's where I'd like to finish with your presentation if I could, because I think that that's important because recognizing those deficiencies that you've pointed out, it has to be fair that the city is not the only place that has to recognize this. This is a county problem as well.
Absolutely.
And any effort to bring the county into conversations, to meaningful conversations of how collaboration can come about to mitigate those things that you presented us tonight, I think is important. I think that, especially at this time when resources may be strained for both city and county, collaborating and putting our resources together seems like the best way to at least start in that direction. I also think that the fact that you put something physical out like that, that walk through, that's something people can really come in and experience rather than just, they missed this council meeting tonight, they missed your presentation, and maybe something doesn't get written in the newspaper about it. So the words go away, but something like what you put here should be maybe considered, I don't know, a traveling exhibit so that every part of this community can see that, can actually walk through it and explain it and see that for themselves, much like the Brown V Board. You can talk about that all day until you go down there and visit the Brown V Board and see some of the exhibits that bring that to some reality. I think that's really the awareness. Talking about it is helpful, but the awareness has to be ongoing. And I appreciate all the work you've done. And like I said, I don't know what the plans are for the Data Walk, but that's something I think should be a traveling piece so that every part of this community can see that in real time and have some way to communicate back to either you or whoever we put together as a joint body to try and work on these issues. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just tell you that this is the sixth Data Walk that we've had since October. And every participant who comes through, we take a name and we take an email and we put that into a piece so that when we start looking at next steps and we start looking at those pieces, that we can get it back out to everyone who's participated in order to be able to let them know what some of those next steps are. So thank you.
Good. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you very much for coming, Brett. This is an extremely important issue, especially the childcare portion of it. I love that the Topeka Community Foundation is administering that Family Forward Fund, which is extremely important. And if people aren't aware of that, it is a program to where businesses can donate to the fund to help pay for childcare. So instead of families having to quit their jobs of making a decision if they want to have $10,000 a year per child in childcare, they're just going ahead and not working, which is taking people out of the workforce. So if businesses donate to this fund, the fund will help the parents pay for it and it's all encompassing and that's how we support each other. So you were talking about the county. That's a great way for businesses in this county to be able to help the childcare disparity that we have. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Nothing further? Thank you again, Brett.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, item number four on the agenda.
A is an approval of a professional service contract between the city of Topeka and Black and Beach Corporation for providing professional engineering services in an amount not to exceed $945,434 for project number 281165 and 281166 for the West Intake Rehabilitation and Chemical Building Upgrades. B is an approval of a Public Works Engineering Design Build Contract between the city of Topeka and KBS Constructors in an amount to be determined by mutual agreement between the city and the design team during both and the preliminary estimate development and guaranteed maximum price development for engineering design build services. C is approval of a professional service contract between the city of Topeka and professional engineering consultants. engineering consultants for an amount not to exceed $300,355 to provide professional engineering services for payment rehabilitation project number 841097 Phase 8. D is an approval of a planning and development services contract between the city of Topeka and GEO Consulting Group in an amount not to exceed $299,966.99 to perform professional engineering consulting services to aid the city in developing and updating the current pedestrian master plan. E is an approval of a workman's compensation claim in the settlement in the amount not to exceed, or I'm sorry, in the amount up to $55,000 to resolve the claim with Gregory Hutley on a full and final basis of a work-related injury sustained by employee while engaged in normal work duties. F are minutes of the regular meeting of June 18th, and C are cereal malt beverage applications, which are listed in front of you, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to request that Consent Agenda item B be moved to Action Item D, so we can discuss it later this evening.
Any approval?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Don't need approval.
Just move it?
Yeah, that one's automatic.
Okay. So from the Consent Agenda, number, item B will be removed from the Consent Agenda and moved to the Action Items this evening. So on the rest of the Consent Agenda, is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Kell. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Baldi Viakala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
We have 10 yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Motion's been carried, and we will move now to Agenda Item Five, Action Items. Madam Clerk?
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez notifying the county clerk of, one, a proposed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the Topeka Metro Transit Authority; number two, the proposed tax rate; and three, the date, time, and location of the public hearing to consider adopting a budget that exceeds the revenue neutral rate.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the governing body. Ben Hart interim Chief Financial Officer, and Josh McCarn, and the Budget Manager will take us through this item. Well, Josh?
Good evening, Mayor and governing body. So tonight is one of many sessions we'll be kind of introducing revenue neutral, talking about the budget. And so what we're approving tonight is setting the max mill levy for the Topeka Metro Trans Authority. And the reason we're setting their authority, one might ask, is when the state legislature did all the revenue neutral legislation a couple of years back, they put them under us, similar to how some county entities have to approve parks and rec boards and library boards. So that's why we are approving this tonight. Now, what you are approving is the maximum mill levy that they will set, so they can go under that 4.2 mill levy, but they cannot exceed the 4.2. And 4.2 is what they submitted last year. So they're not setting a mill levy any higher than they did the prior year. And then the last thing important to note, by approving, or by exceeding the revenue neutral, it gives them an extra about six weeks to approve their budget. So typically, if you exceed your revenue neutral, you have till mid-September to approve your budget. But if you don't exceed it, you have to submit your budget to the state by mid-August. So it's probably more advantageous for them as an organization to get more financial data and approve their budget later in the year, so they have more yearly actuals. And so that's what's approved tonight. And I think we have some representatives from the board here, in case there are any questions, but this was approved the same style last year, so.
Councilman Dobler, and then Councilman Duncan?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay. Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler.
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Councilman Duncan?
All right, so a couple of things for clarification for everybody. We're not actu-- we will still have to hold a hearing on this in September, and at that point, we will vote to actually allow them to exceed the revenue neutral rate, correct?
Correct. What this is doing is simply sending notice to the county clerk that they intend to, that they might intend to exceed their revenue neutral rate, and sets the public hearing that you're discussing.
So I guess my request of, I guess Josh to you through the, they're here, but since you're here, prior to that hearing, what would be helpful for us to have is what the difference is going to be in their budget if we do not vote to allow them to exceed revenue neutral, and then some information from them as to what that would mean if we did not, you know, what services they would have to cut, what products they might need to buy, so that we can provide, you know, as we make these decisions, both for us to understand what that looks like, but also to have a conversation with the public about what that looks like when we have to make these decisions. So those would be two helpful pieces of information to have prior to that hearing, whether it's two weeks from now, I mean, I know the hearing's in September, but whenever that's available.
Yeah, and we have that. And just for full disclosure, their R and R rate was 4.017, and their submitted mill rate was 4.2. So that's, that would be exceeding the mill by about .18, which is about $263,000 of new captured revenue based off. But I'll get that all in.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful for the conversation with the public.
Yep.
Because we're going to ask you the same thing when we discuss it.
Yeah, I got you.
Thank you.
Anything further? There's been a motion, and a second, Councilman Miller.
Just for this one, and then for ours, which is coming up too, I'm sure, you know, that what this, having been on the council for a while and watched what we do, as well as what the county does, to set whatever the state law requires at that point, give ourselves some room to increase if we have to, but then work really hard during our budget process to trim it and justify whatever we're going to do, as much as possible. So this just kind of kicks off the season, if you will, and so I'm very comfortable with leaving, with supporting this at this point for them.
Anything further? Motion is a second. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Baldi Viakala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Kell?
Yes.
We have 10 yes. Motion carries.
Motion passed. Move to Action Item Five, B. Madam Clerk?
B is a resolution introduced by the Policy and Finance Committee comprised of council members Marcus Miller, Spencer Duncan, Michelle Hofer, authorizing the use of $605 and $556 from the unassigned reserve fund for the prepayment of lease payments for portable fire radios.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the governing body. Randy Phillips, our police, or I'm sorry, Fire Chief, will take us through this item. They look alike. Sorry.
Thank you. This would be to pay off in full the five-year lease purchase agreement that was previously entered into for the replacement of our portable and mobile radio system. This was one of the items that was listed on the projects to utilize the unencumbered reserve funds during the CIP process. This has been back through the Policy and Finance Committee, and due to the amount, has to come back before the full council for approval prior to the release of those funds. And with that, I'll happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Dobler?
Thanks. Chief, you know how much this saves us, or maybe Josh can answer the question?
I know it saves a little over $52,000 in interest.
Great. Out of a $600,000 purchase. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for the chief? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second by Councilman Banks. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla? Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Viakala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
And yes, my apologies.
Move to Action Item Five, C. Madam Clerk?
C is a resolution introduced by Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of council members Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 241078 Phase 1 for sidewalk improvements in the Oakland neighborhood.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Braxton Copley, our Director of Public Works, will take us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. We're seeking approval of a sidewalk project in the Oakland neighborhood. This is part of the infill sidewalk project, where every year we identify one or two different neighborhoods. That program is funded at $600,000. In your packet, there is a list of the sidewalk segments that we are going to be treating in this, and basically, they are all located around the State Street Elementary School and the Chase Middle School, and they're roughly in the 500, 600, 700 blocks of Ohio, Sumner, Poplar Green, Chester, Wabash, Forest Division, Laurent. With that, I will ask for approval, and will stand for any questions.
Any questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Just wanted to say it's very refreshing to see this come before and be approved by Public Infrastructure, and excited to see the difference that it will make right around this area. So thank you for that, and I would do a motion to approve.
Councilwoman Ortiz? Okay.
I'll second that, and I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, this is long overdue. This is the monies that went back, and then we got back. Is that correct? And then now we're going to fulfill it, correct?
No, ma'am. That's a different pot of funding. That was the SORC funding, and we have already completed the sidewalks in 200 and 300 blocks of Freeman and 700, 800 blocks of Arter, and we're getting, going out to bid on the 400 and 500 blocks of Twist. This project is being funded out of the infill sidewalk program that annually has $600,000 a year for infill, and it is basically implementing what is now the 10-year-old pedestrian master plan, where they went through and identified target neighborhoods, and specifically areas around elementary and secondary schools.
Well, thank you for that clarification. I just know that they've been talking about sidewalks for a long time, so it is good to see this, and when will it go out for bid? Braxton?
We will work to get it out to bid as soon as you all vote yes.
And then will it, when will it be, when will we start? As soon as, we'll start this year, is that correct?
That is our target, late summer, early fall, to get this under construction.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor, and second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Anything further? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Viakala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
And Dobler?
Yes.
We have 10 yes. Motion carries.
Motion's carried. Now we'll move to what was on the Consent Agenda and move to the Action Item, and that was then Consent Agenda B. If the clerk will read that, please.
Approval of a public works engineering design-build contract between the city of Topeka and KBS Constructors in the amount to be determined by mutual agreement between the city and design build team during the preliminary estimate development and guaranteed maximum price development for engineering design-build services.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Braxton Copley, Director of Public Works, will take us through this item again.
Oh, thank you for the opportunity. So I want to talk about what this is and what it isn't. So specifically, this is the design-build contract that will have many different permutations. This is to give me the authority to hire the design-build team, and then to task them with some items. One of those items will be site selection, another item will be coming up with high-level cost estimates, so that I can come back to you and basically say, here is what it would cost us to do this site, this site, or this site. Here is our recommendation. And I'm also very mindful of the fact that KDOT wants me out of my existing facility by March 31st of 2025, so I need to come up with a short-term solution as well as a long-term solution. So what I'm here to say is, this gets me started. This gets me the authority to engage a consultant, to get them on board, help me identify sites, help me identify cost estimates, and I come back in front of you and say, this is what my plan is, this is where I want to go. Then you tell me that I'm okay with that. Then I go back to the design-build team, and I say, now we have a site. Now come up with a GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price for the contract, so that I can come back to you and say, here's the guaranteed maximum price for this project before we actually get started on that. So this is the start of a long process. We will engage in many more discussions. So with that, I would respectfully ask for your approval to let me get started.
Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I asked this to be pulled for that explanation. I think that we know there's a ticking clock. We know we've got to move forward on this, and I don't want to slow down staff to be able to do exactly what Braxton said. What I was unclear about, which that helped with, was that we're all on the same page, that we haven't selected a site yet, that there's going to need to be further discussions on that, and I just wanted assurances that doing this didn't say, oh, by the way, you've also selected that site, and we're moving forward on it. So, because I know we all have some differing opinions on what that should look like. So that's why I wanted us to all get to hear that in public tonight. And so I'm supportive of this, but I just wanted to clarify that we still will have to go through a site selection process as we move forward. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Braxton, how soon do you think you'll be able to have some site selections if we were to approve this tonight? Ish? Four to six weeks to be able to come back, and I'm assuming that you guys want me to go through one of the committees, and then have the committee make a recommendation, and I would assume that that would be the Public Infrastructure Committee, and then have that committee make a recommendation in terms of which way we go. But I think four to six weeks to get the design team. There also needs to be some potential discussions with KDOT, because one of the potential sites would open up a possibility for a federal relocation assistance to help knock out some of the items in the facilities. And so obviously, I want to have good information to come back to you guys. Do we know, when's that next Public Infrastructure Committee meeting? They do a pretty good job of trying to meet every month. Okay. Couple weeks. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the information. I had the same questions. But I also wonder at this point whether it needs to go through a committee. I know we've established these committees, but not everything has to go through it. We are so informed about it, and so interested, all of us, in whatever the decision-making process was. I wonder if it's really necessary, but instead, to be able to just come straight back to us when he's ready.
Well, I don't think any determination has been made that it has to go through a committee.
I just thought I would say, for whatever.
Okay. Councilman Duncan, since this was your ask, would you like to make a motion?
Move to approve?
Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan, second by Councilman Dobler. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Viakala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
And Duncan?
Yes.
We have 10 yes. Motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried. That completes our action items, and we'll move now to public comment, checking with the clerk. I have three persons on my list. Okay. First person, Tyrone Edwards. Tyrone Edwards. Tyrone Edwards. Second is Henry McClure. Henry McClure. Henry McClure. And the third, Sami Smith. Sami Smith. Who is on the, I can't see it back in my head.
Talk royalty, Mimi.
Taylor, who did you see online? Sami? Pinger?
I don't have a microphone, so I don't know where you.
Can you pinger or call?
I don't have a way to do that.
Can she see us, ma'am?[1778.11] Can she see us, ma'am?
Yes.
You don't know?
Yeah, there's no.
Oh, joining.
No connection?
I know, Zoom, sometimes it'll cut my mic.
Okay.
I have to restart Zoom.
Okay. Well, maybe she can sign up for next week's meeting, and if you have her email, contact her and let her get some instructions on how we can get her appearance here. Okay, so now we'll move to announcements. Madam Clerk.
For next week, we have a presentation on the U.S. Department of Transportation Raze Grant. There is a resolution for the Kansas Children's Discovery Center. There's an ordinance for HME annexation at 25th and Button Road. There's a resolution for the 25 proposed budget for the RNR. And there are two discussion items for the municipal code trees and mobile home parks, and the other one is a franchise renewal with Kansas Gas Services.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to share that the city is hosting a Supplier Diversity Expo for small business owners next week, on Wednesday, July 10, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Washburn University Memorial Union. It's free to attend. Just wanted to share that. Thank you, Mayor.
Let's start with Governing Body, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure everybody's heard that we lost a huge pillar, Jack Alexander, last week. I'm gonna try to get through this. Jack was one of my constituents, Jack was my friend, Jack was my godfather. Jack loved this city, and he loved everything about it. He will truly be missed. I think when Kush, also known as Dale Cushenberry, said he left his mark all over the city, that's true, the water towers, the water district, he was our first black water commissioner for the city of Topeka. He would always holler at me when he seen me drinking out of a bottled water, because he was like, there's nothing wrong with our water. You need to be drinking the city of Topeka's water. But I've never met a guy that he got along with everybody, and he had conversation for everybody, so I would just ask that everybody pray for his family, keep his family, and children, and grandchildren, and your thoughts and prayers. And he was able to touch a lot of youth these last few years. He came out to our camp and talked to the kids about the history, the true history of the Ramblers. It's kind of funny listening to the redlining, because he was from Mud Town, and two weeks ago, I drove him by there, and we talked all about that and the redlining, and how a lot of minorities felt when urban renewal came through and wiped away all of the bottoms and Mud Town, and, you know, they talked about how they had their own area, they didn't even have to leave that area, and I thought that was just amazing, you know. They talked about the first black barber, they talked about their theater, and I'd always ask my father, I'd say, Dad, where were the Mexicans? And he'd say, we were right there with them. We couldn't, you know, go over here or go over there, but they never left that area. And it was amazing to me that when you meet somebody that's truly from Mud Town and the bottoms, they are proud people. They are proud people, and they're proud of where they came from. And it's a mystery to me to hear them, you know, hear people say, now, I don't have a sitter, or I don't have this, or I don't have that. It's funny, because back then, they just all came together, and they did what they had to do for families. They watched each other's kids, they watched, you know, each other's houses. I remember one time, I forgot even who it was, I was little then, and the Akalas, they had a party, like a dinner, because somebody needed a refrigerator, and everybody went over there and ate, and put all their money together, and they bought a refrigerator. That's how it was, that's how proud that they were to be from those areas, so he would truly be missed. I know he missed his wife, Tilly, when she passed in September, and his funeral services are on Monday, and so I just ask again that you continue to pray for Quinton Heights Steel NIA. Jack was one of the founders of that NIA, because he believed in this city, and believed in the good of this city, and bringing everybody together. That's what I liked about him, that, you know, in politics, you always hear, you know, they can go in the aisle. Well, Jack could not only go in the aisle, but he could go to the other side and talk to people, and that was amazing. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything tonight.
Councilman Cale?
I just want to talk about, we're in our fireworks season right now. Just be safe, be smart, have a plan, and most importantly, be respectful of your neighbors. There's a lot of people that have to go to work on Friday, or even on Thursday, so please be respectful, mind the time. Another thing, I'm a part of the U.S. Military War Dogs baseball team. We're a traveling team of active-duty and veteran baseball players, and we will be playing in Topeka and the surrounding area over this next week. Unfortunately, I'm the stud pitcher, so that's... There's fireworks during the game, but, you know, sometimes after, but mostly during the game, so. So we'll be playing in El Dorado Junction City, we'll be playing the Topeka Warhawks here in Topeka next Tuesday night at Hummer Sports Park. It is great to be a part of an organization like the War Dogs, who give back to veterans, work to give service dogs to veterans in need, honor Golden Star families, and as a veteran, it feels great to be a part of an organization like that, that puts me back in my roots of being a military man, and being around those active-duty guys, and I always have to tell my wife, she has to demilitarize me about a week afterwards, because I get a little back to the old ways, but it is a super great organization, and please take a look at it, even if you can't come to a game, take a look at what the War Dogs do. They do a lot across the country for different cities, and it's a great organization to be a part of. Thank you.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I imagine that Councilman Banks didn't say much, because if he was to speak on Jack Alexander's life, he might not be able to make it through it himself. I know that he was a key piece of you making your run. I only met Jack once in my life, wasn't able to really get to know him, but I've heard a lot about him, and so I appreciate your words, Councilwoman Ortiz, and I wanted to pay my respects to Jack as well.
Councilman Dobler.
Couple of quick things. I got to know Jack Alexander 20 years ago when I was in Public Works here. He always liked to give folks advice about the water system, and he knew a lot. And I always love he'd say, how's it going? And he'd always say, very poorly, with a big grin on his face, and just, yeah, neat guy. The only other thing, I think, what's our budget here, Mayor? We're about $400 million. Hopefully, we could, somewhere in that budget, we could come up with some nameplate holders for the time we're going to be here. Councilman Miller and I, being two of the more coordinated council members, have managed to knock our paper nameplates off, so if we could come up with some, I think Office Max, maybe they... So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
I was gonna say something about how I don't need a nameplate, but that's probably not true, so it's all right. Just a couple of quick things, Mayor. Last meeting, I railed a little on property tax stuff. I did last week post some things I'm going to be bringing forward to the council on all of my various social media platforms, so you can go hit those up if you want to see them, before I start sending those to staff to write up a few things and putting them into our legislative agenda. So feel free, I'm easy to find all over those, any platform, just go to Spencer L. Duncan, you'll find me, Twitter threads, Blue Sky, Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn, whatever all it is, so go check it out, and you'll be hearing more about it as we move forward. I want to thank the collective utilities, code compliance, and Public Works. Last couple of weeks, I hit them up frequently for a variety of things, some ranging from the good old mowing as it rains, and we're in that time of year, to some other larger issues, and they were very responsive to all. More importantly, not just being responsive to me, but to a person. Every citizen contacted me after their contact with those individuals, those different departments, and said, please thank them all. They were appreciative. Even a couple times when they were told no, they said they were very polite and respectful no's, with explanations as to why it was a no, and so while they weren't real happy with the no necessarily, they commended our staff for their professionalism, and explaining to them why there were complications with following through on some projects or some efforts. So I want to thank them all for that. It went a long way, obviously not just for folks in my district, but with the citizens who were very appreciative of all the efforts. And the last one is, I occasionally remind a few people, as I was doing it this last Saturday, I was donating blood, and they were telling me the horror stories of how big the shortage is, so please, if you can, go donate blood, and as I always tell people, if you're a little nervous about it, I'll go with you, walk you through it, it's not that bad, so, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer.
I finally had good news, I believe, a week and a half ago. 605 Fair Lawn, which is the old Holodome, is finally coming down. It's being demolished right now. They're going slowly, because they still have some asbestos to deal with, but an eyesore is finally coming down, and hopefully will be down in the next month or so. So that's good news for my district and for everyone in town. I want to encourage everyone to go out to the Fourth of July parades. There are several in town, and it's a lot of fun to see the kids get out. A lot of them are on their bikes, or in a wagon, or something, and they have such a good time, and they enjoy having people to wave to, they love the candy that's thrown to them, so get out to Potlin, or College Hill, or Collins Park, I mean, there's more than that, but get out, enjoy it, and have a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. A number of us, we're out at the Billard Airport this morning to celebrate the opening of their new terminal building, as well as the opening of the Sky Restaurant, and so kudos to everybody who was involved. The Airport Authority Board was there, and Mayor gave some really great remarks and told a great story as usual, but good developments and a huge crowd, really, and people immediately sitting down to eat breakfast at the restaurant like they used to, and kind of broke it in, so kudos to all of them. And Bobby Santacroce in the kitchen, serving it up, and sending everybody home with jambalaya just for a taste. I too knew Jack. Jack was a water commissioner when I first came to Topeka, and used to hang out watching the council meetings every night, and then we'd go drink beer with Bill McCormick and Jack Alexander, and Gary Taylor, the park commissioner afterwards, and poor Richards, those are fun old days, and Jack was a wonderful role model and mentor for all the things that people have mentioned before. I mean, he was a good legislator, but great at reaching out to just anybody, and a good dry sense of humor enough to kind of diffuse almost any situation, I would say. So he was a good friend and mentor, and we'll miss him. Happy Fourth of July to everyone. And City Manager, one of the things we run into is that the county's days for selling fireworks and letting people set them off is different than ours in the city, and it's a big enough deal that usually, we try and have a presentation in June to kind of refresh everybody, ourselves as well as everybody in town, on what that deal is, and probably good to start that again next year. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Couple of things. One is, been hearing a lot from some Oakland and North Topeka folks about the very, very loud fireworks. I don't know what to tell you, folks. I know that your dogs are scared, and I know that elderly people and folks with PTSD really struggle a lot with, it sounds like they're small sticks of dynamite, I swear to God, that happen, that go off in Oakland sometimes, and it's very frustrating, and I don't know what the answer is, but I feel your pain, because I know what it does to our dogs, you know, with it going on into the wee hours of the morning, but I just wanted to bring that up. I hear you. Also, the Fiesta activities are going to be starting pretty soon, I think July 6, on Saturday, there's going to be the 5K Run, which is going to start off at the Oakland Community Center at 8:00 a.m. The Mini Jamaica, which translation is Mini Fiesta, used to be held historically in Arlada Guadalupe school grounds, but for, you know, any number of reasons, which we won't get into, it's now being held at Evergy, and I think the attendance ends up being really good, and it's going to be this Saturday as well, but I cannot seem to find the time, so I don't know if anybody is aware. I've looked in several places, and I cannot see the time. I asked one of the co-chairs right now, I texted her, and I was waiting to hear back from her, but that will be this coming Saturday as well, and there's going to be live entertainment, food trucks, activities, et cetera, and Fiesta's going to start rolling out pretty soon, and, you know, that's held in the heart of the Oakland community, and there's a lot of history, a lot of culture, a lot of pride. Some of the best murals that you will ever see across the city reside within the Arlada Guadalupe Church, along with the activity centers, so we'll be talking more about that as the weeks progress. Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to mention that I had the privilege to attend the 50th anniversary recognition and celebration of the Kansas Hispanic and Latin Affairs Commission here in Topeka, held at the Topeka Hotel, very well attended, many people staying at the hotel as well. Had some entertainment from both local dance groups and some from Kansas City, but got a lot of compliments about Topeka, not necessarily the hotel or Maynor, but Topeka, from people from out of town, who really, really felt like they were welcomed here, especially the group that they had a, I had never heard it described as a Latin jazz band, but it was really good. So it was a good attendance, showed off Topeka really well. So I want to thank the people for choosing Topeka, because they could hold it anywhere in the state of Kansas, to have that conference. And I have a couple of comments about Jack, because I too, David and I knew him way back that same time, when I was a police officer, and I have to tell you, Jack was always a guy who just gave you a big smile, and gave you one little piece of advice, and he wouldn't be like he was telling you what to do, he was just kind of giving you the idea of how things should be, and how you should be as a person. He was just an excellent person. It's important for us to remember people like that, because they set a standard, not because they held an office, but because they were a good person. So it is sad that he has passed, but as suggested by Councilwoman Ortiz, pray for him and his family. So we will now move on from the, Councilman Duncan.
Can we take a moment to acknowledge the new person here this evening?
Oh, well, I thought you guys did that last week. I thought you did that last week.
Well, he really, it's for real, so...
Okay, for real, for real. Okay, well certainly, my bad. I have met with Dr. Perez earlier this week. I do want to acknowledge our new city manager, Dr. Robert Perez, from Dallas, really trying to get himself acclimated to Topeka in the quickest way he can, and I can see that he has got a lot of ideas and a lot of things that he's going to bring to this council. So I am glad, again, on behalf of the governing body, to welcome you to Topeka, and look forward to everything that we can accomplish together. Thank you. I won't tell them the stories about what you've been giving me insight on, but that's good. Yeah. Everybody, get your name tags up, nameplates up, yeah. Okay. Okay. There is a need for three executive sessions this evening. If the City Attorney will read, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss matters deemed privileged under Attorney-client privilege, as allowed under KSA 7543-19B2. The open meeting will resume in this room in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building. The following staff will be necessary to assist the Governing Body in its deliberations, City Attorney Stanley and other staff the Governing Body finds useful.
Okay. Heard the need for our first executive session. Is there a motion? Thank you. Motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ortiz. Wow, wow, I caught that. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we will adjourn to the executive session after a 10-minute break. We've completed our first executive session. We've conducted discussions. No action has been taken. We now have a need for a second executive session. If the City Attorney will read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 45 minutes to discuss employer-employee negotiations related to one or more unions as justified by KSA 7543-19B3. The meeting will resume in this room in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building. The following staff are necessary to assist the Governing Body in its deliberations, City Manager Perez and other staff he deems necessary.
Okay. Heard the need for our second executive session. Is there a motion?
Our motion.
Motion to go into executive session by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Cale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. One. Okay. We are now recessed immediately into our second executive session.
The motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed 30 minutes to discuss personnel matters involving one or more employees as allowed under KSA 7543-19B1. The open meeting will resume in this room in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building. The following individuals will be necessary to aid the Governing Body in its discussion, City Manager Perez and anyone else he deems necessary.
Okay. And then for our third executive session, is there a motion? I move to go into executive session. Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We've concluded our third executive session and our discussions. No action's been taken. No further business coming before this body of the meeting is adjourned. Good.